Phone number.
That's Matt Walkers. He must be calling in for sound.
Yeah, it's easier that way.
So.
There's Laura and.
Mary.
One more.
We need one more, don't we?
Yes, we do.
You didn't hear from anyone, did you, Andrew?
I did not, no. I will text Nathan to see if he's coming. And Kate, well, Casey did ask for the link, I'm expecting him.
Yes, I had to get in touch with Amanda. Because I still haven't set up my email. After whatever happened, because I don't know how to.
Oh, there's Casey.
Hi, Casey.
Hello, thanks for the link, I'm here.
Good to see you.
You too.
All right, well, I show that it's 4:31, so we will go ahead and I will call to order the April 20th meeting of the Spokane Public Library Board of Trustees. You have your agendas. Are there any adoptions or changes? To, hi Jim Kirchner, I see you on there. Hi, Jim.
Hello.
I just called the meeting to order and asked if there are any adoptions or changes to the agenda that you received.
None from me.
Hearing none, I'll have us take a look at the March 2021 Board Minutes.
I move that we approve the March 2021 Board Minutes as presented.
Did I hear a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the March 2021 Board Minutes. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right. Those have been approved, let's take a look at the March 2021 Bills and Contributions in the amount of $6,121,201.84. Let's take a look at those.
I move that we approve the Bills and Contributions for April 2021. Or is that for March?
It's for March.
For March of 2021 in the amount of $6,127,201.84.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Jim has seconded that, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. All right, so now we have the financial report, Nicole, is that you?
Yes, it is, Mary, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, so for library operations in our cash and investments trend, so we saw minimal change in our available cash and investment balance since February. And our number of days of operating costs remain at 113 days. And just as a quick refresher for, for everybody and for new information for potentially new people we have in our audience. And we calculate the days of operating costs by taking our annual adopted expenditure budget and we divide that by 365 days for the year. So for the expenditure trend, the March expenditures totaled $755,875. The largest portion of that amount was for personnel, that was at $516,739. Books and materials costs were at $101,954. And $90,545 is attributed to our routine spending. That's for basically utilities, leases, interfund charges, supplies, and phone and internet. Now for business office news. So recently, the city launched the 2022 Budget Process, this begins with the Six-Year Capital Improvement Program. The department-level budgeting process will begin once the city has calculated the interfund charges and costs for 2022. And finally, as a result of our branches recently opening to the public at a 50% capacity. We do expect a slight increase in activity at the business office. So in an effort to maintain a strong level of support for the library. We've also decided to increase our presence at the STA Plaza location as to coincide with that anticipated increase. So I just want to thank my teams for their dedication and flexible schedules for making sure that we maintain that level of support for everybody. So now I'm going to open it for questions before we proceed with Penny at the bond update.
Any questions? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Hi Penny.
So March marked a very busy month for the bond, we actually processed almost $5.4 million in payments. We also, we also did an amendment to the Lucy contract, but that Lucy Creative is who is doing the children's area. And there's actually two concurrent contracts that are operating under the not-to-exceed amount that the board approved. And ones for design and ones for fabrication. And the contracts are set up so that they're progressive and that when they meet a benchmark, then we amend and move to the next phase. So the design contract just moved to Phase 3, which is for project management and brings in the safety consultant for this. The Safe Landings product. That amendment was $82,380. And we didn't have any contracts that we executed under the special threshold that we have. I have Alan Wagner on deck with me tonight and Alan is the library liaison for the Shadle branch renovation. And so I'll want to talk just about two bolded rows on the expenditure report, if you could take a look at that. The first one is building construction. Budget of $11 million. We have $10 million of that committed to Garko Construction. And we've executed four change orders in the life of this contract. And when you look at those change orders, they're kind of small. But they're actually comprised of 28 different underlying documents. And if I just, if I can kind of pick out the three biggies that we had. We had a water sewer line, a new sewer line put on Wellesley. We also had fire alarm revisions. The fire marshal comes through and make changes, which he did. But we're seeing that on all of our projects. And also, there's some underfloor work that was, we thought we would reuse, but it was obsolete. So those are our three big ones that contributed to those changes. We have $280,000 uncommitted on that line. And we have $300,000 of contingency, so you'll see that we're in pretty good shape for where we are in the projects. So Alan, take it away.
Thanks Penny, I'm pleased to be able to share a little bit about the Shadle Construction Project this evening. I shall remember the general contractor for this project is Garko Construction. And Lorraine Mead is our specific project management team member who is assisting on behalf of Hill for our project. To recap, we're taking a 1990s building with a little under 18,000 square feet. And we're transforming it into a future generation library that's going to grow by about 66%. Really turns it into a jewel of a library with just under 30,000 square feet. And it has all the bells and whistles of a flagship branch, including children's discovery area, classrooms. Multiple conference areas and maker space. And all that's nestled right into the Shadle Park neighborhood. As of today, construction really reaching the home stretch. The majority of the exterior work is completed, includes the primary utility systems have been installed. The main concentration is now on the interior finishes. Flooring, wall treatments, hanging the doors, putting in all the hardware for the doors and selling acoustical tile. And of course, with the great weather and spring approaching, we're beginning to do some work on the exterior landscaping. And that includes preparation for the installation of the monument sign and the public art pieces. By May, which you know is right around the corner, the team will be engaged in testing all the systems with our commissioning agents. And if good luck continues, knock on wood, wherever you can find it. Will get to the punch list on this project during June. I think that's all I had to share this evening, Penny, was there anything I missed?
I just would emphasize that, given where we are in the life of this project, I'm really happy with the construction contingency that we have remaining in the 280,000 on that building construction line. And I do pay some other expenditure expenses from that line item such as utilities. We will pay the city, the fiber work that they're doing to install. And also, I've got the user access control system being charged to that line, so pretty happy that we've got just a few months left. We will definitely continue to see changes, but for every add that seems to come along, there's also credits when there's some price changes for different product or we don't need certain things. So with that, are there any questions for me?
Questions for Penny? Or for Alan?
Hey, if you wouldn't mind, I want to put in a disclaimer before, you know, I get my wrist slap. I say flagship branch. But of course, the Central Library is the flagship branch. Shadle's a little jealous, so we just wanted to work that into our wording. I'm sure we won't be using that in future communications, so please ignore after tonight.
Shadle is my branch, so I forgive you, Alan, and actually I applaud you for that. All right, thank you, Alan, thank you Penny. Matt, I believe it's your turn.
Well, way to steal my thunder, Alan, gosh, I got nothing left to say. What Alan said.
About Shadle, Matt, there's lots going on.
Oh, yeah, 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 lots of, as Alan pointed out, we've had, we've had great weather for site work, a lot of curb work going in sidewalks. They're talking about prepping for asphalt, gravel, so things are moving along quickly. As Alan indicated, yeah, a lot of interior work now is finishes, ceilings, carpeting, flooring, tile. But it's moving along, it's really coming together. We're starting to talk about commissioning and closeout and punch lists. The architects are running out of submittals to review and we're running out of requests for information. Even the change order proposals are slowing down a bit, so we're kind of drawing up closer to the end here. In fact, we're, G4 is ordering, we're procuring furniture and equipment right now, furniture primarily, that's going on right as we speak. And the Phase 2 projects, Indian Trail and South Hill are going in for plan review this week. So those are moving, moving along just as, moving along well also, so. That's kind of what's going on in our world here, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, the furnishings, the furniture. Has that already been purchased and just not, we haven't installed it yet, but, or have we just not purchased it yet?
We're in the process of purchasing it now, procuring the, all the furniture.
And that would be, yeah. For all the Phase 1 projects, probably the same.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions for Matt? Well, thank you very much, Matt. Andrew? Nope, first it's my report, excuse me, I have no report. Now it's your turn, Andrew.
All right, well, I hope you'll join me in the excitement around the branches. As we're getting closer and closer to those reopening times. I think our teams and our partners have really done a fantastic job in keeping us on track, on schedule, on budget. It's crazy that we're at this point and will be really offering something special out to the public in just, just a few months. You know, we're talking about August and September for our opening dates. I did also, before I get into my report, I did want to thank the South Hill staff for accommodating me today, I'm joining you from the South Hill Library. A tree fell on my house and garage last Sunday. So I am without internet at this point, so thank you. In the true SPL spirit, they showed flexibility for the day in getting me a space to join the meeting, so. Thank you. And that's also to say, take it easy on me today, I'm in a very delicate state of mind and, you know, maybe not have done as much prep work as I, as I usually do for the meeting, so. But I am here, so that's, that's, that's the positive for today. April 12th, last week, really marked a big step for our return to in-person services. This time without an appointment. So we're, as a community, we're in Phase 3 and staff has been working really hard to get us to this point. And things have been going really well, we're able to offer the capacity up to 50% in the buildings. And we've also returned to nearly pre-pandemic hours. The exceptions would be North Town and STA. As well as Sunday hours at this point, we're not offering those at our South Hill branch. But I think that staff has done a fantastic job in getting us to this point. The public has been really excited to get back into the branch. Some expressing a real emotional experience, walking up to the branch and being able to walk inside and choose items. So we're really happy to be in this point as well. Customers are still encouraged to keep their visits to 30 minutes or less. And we are offering periods of time for high-risk visitors to utilize the services, so. All in all, we're on the right path. You know, we can only offer as much as our community allows. So that, you know, sticking with those safety product protocols is still very important for us in safely offering library services as well. So hopefully we continue to see that happening. If not, you know, if we get into a Phase 2 scenario, then, you know, we'd be manipulating building capacity limits, you know, to accommodate what's laid out by the governor's office. Any question on the reopening before I move on?
Okay. But have you had any issues with people wanting to stay longer than 30 minutes, and if so, how do you handle that?
I have not heard any issue, perhaps, I know Paul Chapin's here, he might be able to offer some perspective and I just saw his camera go on, so you knew what I was going to do.
Sure, we haven't had any people going past the 30-minute mark that much. We've had some issues with people not wearing masks, so we have a polite way of working with them, we'll give them a mask. And we'll coach them and right now, the kind of weekly reports are families coming in with younger children that don't have masks on, so. We work with them and basically, we haven't ejected anybody, but STA is the single place where mask-wearing has been a challenge. And generally, we have about three or four instances a week in all of our branches of people not wearing masks, but there's not any conflict, people comply when we ask them.
Great.
Good to hear.
So.
Hey Andrew, sorry, this is Kate. I had a question, are you, so I know you guys are planning, did you say September for open time? Are you planning on doing like an event around that, or what does that look like?
Right, we're still working out the details of that. You know, we're looking at August, September timeline, we were originally planning this, we thought that we would keep it very simple, it wouldn't have much of a public presence at all, it'd be more of a virtual thing. We're still keeping an eye on how we're progressing as a community and that will largely dictate what the final product will be. But if we stay in this scenario of a Phase 3 in vaccine distribution is still progressing at the way that it is, then I can see us having some events. They would be not as big probably as we would in a, you know, pre-pandemic, but you might be able to expect that if we're staying on target here. All right. So moving on, I'm really excited to share with the board a land acknowledgement that we partnered with the Spokane Tribe of Indians on, Amanda and I thank you Amanda, working with me on this. We, and this is part of the director's report, I put the entire land acknowledgement as part of there. But really, the point of this, it's a formal statement that recognizes indigenous people as the original residents of the land. And brings a bit of education and history to the land that we now occupy. And it's also a commitment to standing in solidarity to combat indigenous erasure. And you've seen probably more of these pop up with different organizations over the past couple of years. And we're just really grateful that the tribe worked with us on this. And we're hoping that it will be read at library events prior to the beginning as well as before the board meetings that we have here. So I was going to read it so I can hear, but I'm not going to be able to pronounce at this point the Salish names. I haven't had an opportunity to really practice those, so please forgive the absence of those names. We are working with the tribe in getting recordings of the pronunciation from actual tribal members. So look for that moving forward. But let me bring this up here and I'll also note that we're also working with the tribe and having a version that is all in Salish. As well as English language, so. Without the Salish words, this is how it reads. "This building sits on the traditional homelands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chihuahua Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds. Identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all who share this land." So. These will also be on display at the library buildings on the outside where you would traditionally see prestigious names such as the Board of Trustees on the outside of the building and council members and mayors will also be doing the land acknowledgement as well. And I believe, Amanda, are we still working on shorter sentences? That would be at each of the locations as well, that might be different?
So there'll be two plaques at each location, one will be the bureaucratic dedication plaque, you know, with the dignitaries' names on it. And then the second plaque, and that will have a small Salish phrase on it, also translated into English. So there'll be a mention of Salish on that plaque. Then there will be a land acknowledgement plaque as well that will read what you just read aloud.
Thank you. In addition to that, we've also worked with the Spokane Tribe in coming up with a name for the third floor event stage area. And they have given it the name, this is a part of the Central Library, in Huixue Hall, and that means life in the water. And this name, geez, I don't remember the name of the book. Amanda probably has it right there, there we go, the Spokane River, aptly named, appropriately named. There's a, one of the entries into that book talks about the names that the tribes had for the river. And this is one of the names that was used to designate the river, so. We're really proud that the tribe worked with us on this, we think it's a really appropriate name to have for that space. You'll recall the third floor of the Central Library overlooks the Spokane River. So I think it's going to be a really nice touch and really nice connection with both the past and what we hope to be the future of the facility. We're looking forward to working with the tribe in developing some more public programs. You know, in the future as we, you know, open up the building, so. Any questions on that?
I'm curious if, I'm particularly thinking of it in the context of where the name of the hall on the third floor of the Central Library is displayed. But I'm wondering if there will be a phonetic guide of some type so that people who, you know, don't have any context can understand how they might try to pronounce it.
Yep, similar to the land acknowledgement, you know, and working with the tribe on a recording, we'll also have that. And remind me, they weren't a huge fan of the phonetics, correct, Amanda?
Yes, so we'll probably put the translation next to it, but we might not put a phonetic, but we will have the recording of the pronunciation on the website. So people can hear it there as well.
All right, let me see if I can bring my report up again, here we go. Other news, our very own Shiloh Dietz, she's our community data coordinator, this is a partnership, part of the funding for that position comes from the city. She organized and participated in a community-wide panel for the People for Effective Government called Data Science for Social Good in a Smart City. And really, the point of the program was to show how different people with different goals might use data differently. And that's, we've had this position for a little over a year, so it's really great to see Shiloh get out and start to facilitate these conversations. Did receive a letter of appreciation from the organization that we did this for. Just about the quality and the thoughtful approach that we put towards, talking about data, it's a big thing. And it's going to continue to be a big thing and I think it's an important role for the library to play for communities. We continue to work on our programming, just like our opening. You know, we're still trying to figure out what that's going to look like. So staff are, they're kind of working in two modes of delivering these virtual programs and planning for the possibilities of in-person programs come the fall. So it's, it's, it's not an easy task for sure to look into a crystal ball that's constantly changing. But staff is doing an admirable job. And last few things, our staff spotlight this month went to Joey Malloy. As you can imagine, we've been working in a virtual environment. And speed and access is a big thing and Joey worked to improve that for, actually Rob Rus, one of our, our support services director. He has to download and work with these massive reports which took a lot of time and Joey made some fixes and tweaks to make it less trudge work for Rob. Also, we have another longtime employee retiring from the organization. Harland Betts, who has worked for us for 36 years. He will be retiring effective April 24th. And for those of you that use the phone services, in years past, Harland served as that voice that you would hear with our messaging service. So you may not have met him, but if you use the phone service, you met him telephonically. So you may not have met him, but if you use the phone service, you met him telephonically. So thank you to Harland for his years of service. Greatly appreciated. I also shared as part of the report, the opening dates again, because they're more fun after a month goes by because they get closer and your anxiety and your stress just increases. So just thought it was valuable to share those. Beginning April, April, August 10th, we'll start with our openings. And they'll go through September 2nd. So we're really excited about those. And finally, the city of Spokane has named a city administrator, Johnny Perkins. He's coming from San Diego. I'll have an opportunity to sit with him next week. No, it's, it is now, but next week. It'll be this week, this Friday, I'll be able to sit with him and get to learn a little bit more about him and share all the exciting things that we have going on. Spokane Public Library. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question, Andrew. Were you in the house when this tree fell on it?
Yeah. Yes, it did not fall on my head, but I was in the house. Everyone was in the house. It happened at 10 o'clock at night. And it shook, it crashed, it destroyed our garage. We're missing part of a roof. But we can live there and still a little bit, I'm calling it shell shocked. It's almost like you were in a car accident. But we're all, we're all safe and we're all moving along. Thank you for asking.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. So sorry you had to go through that, Andrew. All right. Thank you, Andrew, for your report. Kate, Council Liaison Report.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, yeah, I just have a few updates. So I've been working with Amanda and Skylar and we are going to do two different Facebook Live events on my Facebook to do a virtual tour of the Hive and the Hilliard branch. So we're really excited about that. And I just wanted to thank them for helping me get everything scheduled and working with me and my schedule and everything. So I think it'll be really fun. And then also I had noted before that the city put in their budget to do the summer youth passes, but just to update, STA has actually decided to do it regional. And so all students from all the school districts will be able to get a summer youth pass. And so they're doing another pilot program. So I'm pretty excited about that. And so they're working with the county libraries and the city libraries again to have the places where the passes will be handed out for the students. So really excited that we're trying things a little bigger. And hopefully we can continue to do this years to come. So and sorry to hear about the tree, Andrew. That sounds very horrifying. I think that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much, Kate. I know I was excited when I saw that STA was going to provide those passes. I just think that's terrific. But thank you for planting that seed a while back. All right. Amanda, it's time for our communications report.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi. So highlights for the week are, or for this month are the virtual construction tours. We prepared five virtual construction tours for all of the public and the board to watch of each of the sites. Ryan Tucker and Skylar worked hard on these. Skylar wrote the script and Ryan did the tour leading and editing. So I hope you check those out. But as Kate said, she's doing a virtual tour of the Hive and Hilliard. And I would say that these construction tours are awesome. Watch them. But you know, things are changing quickly. So we'll continue to get updated information out as those, as those buildings progress. So make sure you turn into Kate, tune into Kate's Facebook Live as well, because I'm sure things will have changed even from when we were there just a few weeks ago creating these. A lot of our focus has been on reopening to 50% capacity communication, making sure the public knows that they can come in now with no appointment. And like Andrew said, we've gotten really nice comments. We've seen a lot of people just really happy to be able to come back into the library. So that's been very rewarding to see. We also are looking to the grand reopening. So not the opening because of COVID, but the opening because of our new buildings. And we hired a local agency called The Woodshop as our agency to run a campaign this summer, letting the public know about our new buildings. So we will be working through that, developing some messaging strategy and approach there. And, and also just carefully monitoring the COVID situation for how mu, how big can we go? Or how much do we have to pull back based on how many people can be in the building when we open in August? We also worked, Skylar worked closely with the foundation to do a library giving day campaign. And that was successful. We did that email outreach and social media outreach. And it resulted in raising about $5,800 for the foundation, which is double, about double what they raised in 2019, which was the last year where we were able to do the library giving. We skipped in 2020 for obvious reasons. And we also issued a solidarity statement with the Asian American Pacific Islander community due to the increase in violence we're seeing in that community or against that community across the country. And so we issued a statement in support of that also during the month of March. And we created also on the DEI area, we created an internal newsletter on diversity, equity, and inclusion in collaboration with our consultant, Tara Ramos. And she will be writing content for us monthly to internally talk about diversity and equity and inclusion issues. So it's an opportunity for us to continue to socialize and in-culturate DEI into our community as, or into our, into our culture internally. So that newsletter also started in March. As far as social media, nothing major to report continues to be a solid working channel for us. Our top post on Facebook was about the Seed Library. Our top post on Instagram was a book face as always. And our top post on Twitter was also a book face. YouTube, we're continuing to see an increase in subscribers on YouTube. Last time I checked, we were even closer to 400. I'm sure we'll surpass 400 by the time we meet again. It's not a huge number, but it's nice to see people are still feeling engaged in our YouTube programming even a year into providing it there. And then finally, I'll just skip ahead to the earned media. We saw a big uptick in the number of earned media stories that we got in the last month because of upcoming, because of interest in our construction projects. Really nice article on the Hive and also articles about our reopening due to phase three. And also Andrew was featured in an article on restorative justice in the Library Journal. So had some nice quotes and images of our community court program there. Photos are a little dated, obviously, since we haven't been having community court in the, the library there for a while. But it's still nice to be able to contribute to that conversation for the future. So that concludes my report unless you have any questions.
I actually have a question about community court. Is that still going on at some other location or has it been suspended during the pandemic? Due to the pandemic and then is something we're going to try to reinvigorate when we open downtown again or?
They had suspended it for a little bit. I think they are now offering it the downtown, the city hall in council chambers. The Hilliard location still continues at the Northeast Community Center. They did pause that for a bit. And they just opened up a third community court serving the East Central neighborhood. So they're still moving along, you know, and will be looking to reengage in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amanda? Thank you very much, Amanda. We move on to new business. Charis, you're going to talk to us about customer self-service solutions.
Yes, thank you, Mary. As a part of our bond projects, we awarded a contract to MK Solutions for our self-service technologies, which are our checkouts, check-ins, and automated materials handling solutions. These technologies with our new branches will be consistent across all of our locations. Right now, we are experiencing an opportunity to expand the reach of our libraries through our partner locations, specifically Spokane Public Schools. Our policy right now requires that we utilize a formal procurement procedure whenever the value of goods exceeds $75,000. However, our policy also allows the board to modify the requirement in the event that there's no reasonable purpose that would be served by following it. So as we just went through the formal procurement process and have identified the vendor that we like to remain with for the sake of consistency, we believe that going through the formal process again is unnecessary for these satellite locations. So what we are requesting is that the board modify our policy for formal procurement for the specific procurement so that we can continue to purchase equipment and software from MK Solutions through library operations for use in partner locations in the future.
Charis, I want to understand these two sections, section two, 2.1C and D, are they already part of the policy?
They are a part of the policy currently. And what the policy allows for is you to select on specific procurements to opt to not follow those.
So all we are doing, we're not really modifying the policy. The policy already provides for us to approve this particular, I can't say it, purchase. So I would ask that we go ahead and, and change the language on there because we're not modifying the policy itself. We're just approving the purchase under the, the policy sections that are quoted here.
No, you're absolutely right.
All right. So we are being asked to approve the, the purchase to allow library operations to purchase this equipment and software from MK Solutions. That is what is in front of us.
All move that we approve that as modified by Mary's comments.
Second, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Then all in favor? I. Any opposed? All right. Go forth and purchase.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Charis. I see Tara is supposed to be talking to us about the E-Rate Award. Hi, Tara. I didn't see you before. Hi.
Hi there. So just to give you a quick thing on what E-Rate is, so on your Comcast bill, you have a little, all those little fees and little extra monies, you're not sure where they go. One of them goes to the universal connectivity charge. And it's a federal program that schools and libraries then apply to get discounted services. So we get 80% of our internet is discounted through E-Rate. So good and bad, they go off of the free and reduced lunch rate of your, of your local school district. So we do hit 80% for a discount on that. So we get 80% with our internet. This one is specific to purchase for telecommunications hardware. So it's switches, cabling, servers, all of that. So we upfront the money, which the one that we're asking for now is at 294. We will get reimbursed all but 67,000 of that. And it goes through, the E-Rate program goes through a really heavy bidding process. And it's basically you take the lowest bidder and Ednetics, which is a post-falls company, was the lowest bidder to come in for those services. So they were awarded the contract.
So Tara, are you saying that we are going to be applying for reimbursement?
So we've gotten approval for reimbursement, but we've put it up and then we get it back.
Okay. So this, we are going to be reimbursed then. It's not, we've already been through that process. Okay. So.
Tara, how long does it take for the reimbursement to come through after we've expended the funds?
You know, I, I'll have to get back to you on that because the way that we did it last time, the city paid the 80%. And so this is the first time we're going through the process on, on the actual category two, which is the networking equipment. So I, I can do a little bit more. Unfortunately, I can't answer that right now. Okay.
I think it will be later in the year, Tara, probably after fall. So the, the purchases would be made now via purchase order from the bond technology line. And then immediately, whenever that's done, then Tara's team will submit for reimbursement. And I think it's closer to year end that would come in, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
And Penny, you may have just answered my question, but this comes out of the bond, this is a bond item.
It is. And these will be assets. I'm sorry.
Already in our bond budget to do this.
No, this was additional, but we have the capacity to, we have plenty of interest. And it's, we knew that this E-Rate program was available. We didn't build it in the bond because we didn't know the timing was going to work out. And I also wanted to check with our bond attorney to make sure that this was allowable. And she did say absolutely it was. So we're basically paying $67,000 for almost $300,000 worth of equipment. Not a bad deal. Any other questions for Tara? All right. You're looking for approval to accept the award, execute the agreement, and initiate the related purchases.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
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 Any opposed? All right. That's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. All right, Andrew, you're going to lead us through the next couple of items.
Yep. So according to our bylaws, this is our annual meeting. Welcome to our annual meeting. And at the annual meetings, we elect new officers. In past years, we've used the terms of service to determine who had the honor of, of leading the board meetings. So if we were to follow that, Laura would be the new chair and Casey would be the new vice chair. But before we consider that, I really just wanted to thank Mary for her leadership over the past two years. You've led us through some pretty intense public comment periods with drag queen story hours. And you, you handled that admirably. And you've also provided us leadership throughout the pandemic. And it's greatly appreciated. You've been, you know, one of the treats of, of being the chair. So you might want to reconsider, Laura, is that you talk with me on a monthly basis just to kind of get the scoop of what's going on and what's coming up on the board. And, and you've always just been, you know, a very great sounding board. And it's been really enjoyable to work with you in that capacity. So I just wanted to thank you for that. And yeah.
Well, and, and I want to say to you, Andrew, that, and Laura, it really wasn't all that much heavy lifting, talking to Andrew every month. And I've enjoyed working with you. I've enjoyed working with all of you. And it's been such an exciting two years, exciting and with, with a number of different definitions. So thank you all for that.
So with that, I think we would be looking for a motion from the board. I did. I did touch base with Laura and Casey over the past month, letting them know that they'd be tapped on the shoulder so it wouldn't come as a surprise. But we'd be looking for a motion for that to happen.
I move that Laura be the chair and Casey be the vice chair.
And I second that. So I need to say, it has been moved and seconded that Laura become our chair and Casey become our vice chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this would take place starting next month. Well, this would be Mary's last meeting. So Laura, I'd be in contact with you for next month.
I'm handing the gavel to you, Laura.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you. I'll reiterate what Andrew said about your good leadership over the last two years.
Thank you so much.
The next item, I think you gave that one to me too, is to establish a subcommittee as we have in past years around our finances. We thought last year would be the year that we would, you know, be having our future funding conversations with the city. The pandemic sort of put that on pause. But funding is a real issue for us, considering the amount of square footage and functionality that we are adding to our facilities. We still have not landed on a funding strategy for increased staff and operations. So that's going to be part of the challenge this year. So looking for two people, two trustees to help us along in that process.
Are you looking for volunteers, Andrew? Is that what you're doing?
I am, yes. This is, this is one that I was unable to do some outreach. I was hoping to do it this week or last week, but I just did not get to it. So I know Nathan has been part of that committee in the past, as well as you, Mary. I think that you have served on it the past couple of years as well. So if there's any, any takers, those that don't serve on this will have to do my review. So that's.
I will, I will continue to do the finance committee.
As will I, if you all will have me.
Yeah.
And so do we need a motion for that, Andrew?
Yes.
All right.
All right.
I move to appoint or retain our current finance committee of Nathan and Mary for the next term.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the, that Nathan and I will continue to serve on the finance committee. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, with that, I will ask if any other agenda items have come up? Any other comments to be made? Our next regular meeting, which is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, will have Laura at the helm. And so with that, if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Take care, everyone.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.